Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Orange County School Board's Rural Development Workshop, which has been scheduled for today for the purpose of discussing the following board policies. BA, School District Operational Goals. BDD, Board Superintendent Relations. BDF, Unitary Status Advisory and Oversight Committee. BDG, School Attorney Legal Fees. BG, Board Policy, School Board Policy Process. Excuse me. BGC, Review of Policies. And E, BBA, Disease Prevention Face Coverings. The school board will be hearing public comments on the aforementioned school board policies. Board members are attending in person or telephonically, so I will take a quick roll call, beginning with Member Gallo.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning, Member Lopez.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
And Member Cobert is not joining us this morning. Member Gould.
Here.
Thank you. Member Felder will be joining us late. Member Castredal.
Good morning, Chair.
Vice Chair Byrd.
Good morning, Chair.
Good morning, and of course, I'm present. I want to remind the public that the board members will not be engaging in electronic or digital communication during the meeting so that we can focus on the meeting itself. If you need to reach us for any reason, do so before or after the meetings. And now, we will begin our meeting with a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, and I will invite you to join us. And now, for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the school board will only be hearing public comments on school board policies that I just mentioned. Because this is not a regularly scheduled school board meeting, there will be no pre-agenda period in which the public would normally address the school board on germane topics that are not related to the work of the board. I'm sorry, I always say that, that are related to the work of the board but not on the agenda. Should you wish to address the school board on another topic, please do so at a regularly scheduled meeting during the pre-agenda period. With that, let us go ahead and begin. Let me ask first, do we have any members of the public here for any of the policies the board is discussing today? All right, let me call then on our Deputy Superintendent, Dr. Vasquez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We are bringing back our B policies. We have taken into account all of the feedback that we have received, and we are ready to present our final revisions, and I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Palmerini.
Good morning, members of the board. Just wanted to give you the timeline of how we got to where we are today. We first went over these policies in cabinet on February 28, 2022. We've had two separate work sessions on March 1 and March 21 of 2022. Today is our statutorily required Rural Development Workshop in order to obtain public comment. That is scheduled for today, July 19. If these board policies get consensus to move forward, we will put them on the board agenda for our August 9 meeting, and the policies will be effective upon approval of the board on August 9. So instead of going through the PowerPoint, we're just, we're going to go through the red lines as we've done previously, and my screen was showing the red lines that was on my monitor.
Okay, there we go.
There we go. Thank you, guys, in the back. Policy BA, School District Operational Goals. Just as a note, there was no changes to this policy since our last meeting on March 21, but for people who may be watching, I'm just going to go through this briefly. We did a substantial revision to the first section of the policy that says, "The school board shall be responsible for maintaining the system of school improvement and education accountability pursuant to the Florida statutes and state port of education rules. The system of school improvement and educational accountability shall be consistent with and implemented through the district's continuing system of planning and budgeting required by relevant Florida statutes." So the things we look at, school improvement plans, and this is going to look a little, you know, hard to read because of the redlining, but there's four sections. We look at school improvement plans as part of our district operational goals. We look at the early warning system, and the early warning system is a statutory factors to look at when a child is starting to not perform well. It's, you know, not coming to school being truant, scoring level ones on FSA or whatever the new tests are going to be called at this point, things of that nature, multiple suspensions. When we start to see that kind of stuff, that's part of the early warning system that we have to utilize in order to ensure that we get students back on track. Public disclosure is part of our system, and school improvement funds. So those are the four factors that we look at with respect to our operational goals. Those are consistent from March 21. So we added multiple sections here to this policy just to make sure we encompass all of the correct Florida statutory citations, and the rest of it has been just deleted. Are there any questions coming out of this policy before I move on?
Any questions on this policy? Yes, Member Castredal.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just had a question. You mentioned the test accountability system. Do those fall under our school improvement plans, early warning system?
Early warning system is a separate statutory provision in 10142 that basically says you have to put that in place to ensure that when you start to see those factors occurring with children, that you intervene to make sure that you're doing the things to make sure they get back on track.
So the accountability plan is just embedded in the overall system, not enumerated in the following components?
So the system of school improvement and education accountability, this is the statute, the four factors that you all have determined should be part of that system of school improvement and educational accountability. It falls within all of the statutory duties you're requiring, but these are the four things that you are tasking us to look at.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Board members on the phone, either one of you, Member Byrd or Member Gould? All right, seeing no further questions, we'll move on.
Yeah, Madam Chair, just for the board's pleasure, do you want to say that we have consensus to push this forward to the one by one, or do you want to do this at the end of all policies?
I'd rather do it by each policy. Is there any disagreement with moving forward? Okay, then we have consensus.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next policy is Board and Superintendent Relations. We made minor changes coming out of the March 21, 2022 work session. So I will go down and get, if I can operate a computer today, I will get there. Subsection 2 is where we made a minor change. Only decisions of the full board acting as a body are binding on the superintendent. In case of individual board members or committees requesting information or assistance without board authorization, superintendent may refuse such requests in that, that in the superintendent's opinion require a material amount of staff time or resources that are disruptive or unreasonable. If the board as an entirety was directing the superintendent to do something, that would be within the board's authority to do, so that's why we added individual board members, just to clarify it. Next is Section 3A. Individual board members shall not give instructions that exert undue influence over persons who report directly or indirectly to the superintendent, and we added language on how to resolve a particular matter. And you all were all copied on an email from a constituent about this particular provision that was concerning about your ability to talk to the superintendent's staff individually. I know you all know this, but just for the public's purpose, I want to go ahead and go over the difference between the board's role versus the superintendent's role. Under our system of governance set up by statute, the board is the policymaking body of the school district. That is in 10132. The superintendent is charged with the responsibility for the administration and management of schools and for the supervision of instruction in the district. And also, in Section 10151 of Florida statutes, the superintendent is charged with, quote, "directing the work of personnel subject to the requirements of Chapter 1012." And the case law is very clear, there's this one quote from the school board of, Green versus School Board of Hamilton County that I always utilize. It says, "By statute, the school board is the policymaking body for the school district, where the superintendent is the chief executive officer of the school board and chief administrator within the school district." So this policy provision is of recognition of the longstanding roles and responsibility that this board has had vis-à-vis the superintendent, which is if there are issues with respect to a particular school district employee or how a matter is handled, what this board will generally do is go to the superintendent, so the superintendent can then resolve that issue with her staff. This is longstanding how this board is operated. This just codifies what we do as a normal practice. Scrolling down to Section C, "As except as required by law, the board will not participate in decisions or actions involving the hiring, evaluating, disciplining, or dismissing of employees other than the superintendent." And then we added this statement, "It is expected that the superintendent notify the board appointments to schools and to the cabinet." Now, this is a codification of what we've been doing previously, but the board wanted to make sure that it's in policy, just so the superintendent is aware that when we have cabinet-level appointments or school appointments, that the board be notified before those go on the agenda. And then, number five, we made a slight change. This is dealing with the superintendent's evaluation. So in accordance with the specific terms and conditions of the superintendent's employment agreement, the board will conduct an annual, we added the term "annual," we were supposed to do it annually anyways, but we just formalized that. Formal summative evaluation of superintendent. A written evaluation document shall be compiled by the board chair or designee, and each board member will review the evaluation individually with superintendent. A copy of the formal summative evaluation shall be shared with the board, and here's what we added, "shared at a public meeting and made available to the public." Those are the changes to this policy. Are there any questions?
Let me start with Member Gallo.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I thought we had always, in our evaluations superintendent, I thought it was always on board docs and was always available to the public, was it not?
It is, but we just wanted to make sure that it was crystal and clear.
Okay, no, I understand that. So here's, and I don't know that this would need to be placed in policy, but here's my issue. As a school board member, I don't want to be involved in the hiring and firing of personnel. I understand that that's not my job. My job is government, is governance, oversight, and accountability. In the same respect, as a school board member, I don't think that anybody knows my community as well as I do. I'm here to represent my community, I'm here to represent my constituents, my constituents' needs, their thoughts, their opinions, that's what they elected me to do. And I felt at times when we are hiring principals or we're moving principals, I typically find out about the same time as the public does. And I'm not looking to, again, get involved in that process, but I do believe that the school board is a resource that isn't used often enough in this district. And I say that because I do know my community, and if, if the district were to come to me and ask me my opinion, even if I didn't agree with the changes they were making, I might be able to provide input that they didn't think about. I might be able to provide insight that they didn't, that they weren't aware of or didn't know about. It may, may not change their opinion, they still can do what they need to do, but I don't think that we're used as a resource as often as we should. And then when we place a new superintendent at a school, you know, if it's a sitting superintendent, it's done by the district, again, we're not consulted, we're not asked, we're not, we don't give input as to the needs of our community. There are panels at times where, you know, where they'll go to the community, to the teachers and the parents, and I love that, and they'll ask them, "What do you expect from your community?" But, but they don't ask the school board, they don't ask the school board member, what we think is best for our community. And I have discussed with the superintendent, and we are working on changes, and so I don't know if something like that needs to be in policy. But I do believe that we were elected for a reason, and one of the reasons was because we come from our community and we know our community. And I, and I just think we should be used when making some of these large decisions because we get hit on it. No one's, no one's blaming the district when we move a principal or we put a different principal in that school, you know, who's getting, who they're getting mad at? Me. You know who's getting emails? Me. I'm the one that they blame because they think Angie Gallo moved a principal, and I can tell them all day, three times on Sunday, I don't make those decisions, that does not fall under the purview of a school board member, but especially in my small community, they get mad at me. So I don't know, Madam Chair, what we can do or Superintendent Vasquez.
And Angie, if I can, Member Gallo, if I can just supplement one other component of that that you just mentioned, even though you explain that you don't make that decision, the public also knows that the superintendent reports to this board, so there is no point at which this board can get away from the decisions that the superintendent makes. So I do think it's important to recognize that this elected body is always answerable to the public, not just for the decisions we make, but for the ones the superintendent makes, because there's always that, you know, you can fire the superintendent, so you can tell the superintendent what to do, and so that I get back from the public. So it's just, that's, that's our reality that we live in. So wanted to supplement that before we go to Dr. Vasquez for thoughts, and then I'd like to entertain maybe some thought on how we could work some language in that deals with advance notice to school board members, possibly, John, so give that some thought. Dr. Vasquez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have had conversations with Superintendent Jenkins about the concerns that have been voiced from the board members, especially through these past work sessions dealing with this particular policy. We have had conversations about how we may be able to tweak that process to be able to include a time where the area superintendent meets with the board members to gather input prior to the community meeting taking place, and even having more conversations about, you know, the rationale as to why an individual has been placed, for example. We currently have two schools that we are going to need to replace principals because of the school, the school grade. And so in that particular situation, we have set criteria given to us from the state that we must comply with as we are looking at those changes. But certainly, we are able to have those conversations. As you mentioned, Board Member Gallo, you are intimately familiar with your community and the, just the dialogue about what is needed, and then what the considerations are from the learning community and the district, I think will be very, very viable as we are looking to make the best placement. I think will be very, very viable as we are looking to make the best placement at the helm of a school. I don't know that it's needed in policy, but I will defer to the board as to what you want to do. I know that we would want to get consensus to move forward with the policy. And any substantive changes to this policy would require us to come back, but I will defer to the board.
John, I just realized, I mean, we have the sentence in there. The only thing that's missing in that sentence really is if the notice, if the notice to the board member could be done in advance of public notification. And I think that would address the issue.
Absolutely, I think it would address the issue. That seems to be a substantive change that we would have to readvertise and bring back. I think what I think the superintendent current and the superintendent designate that's sitting down at the end have heard this board's direction loud and clear on that. And I think they would implement in accordance with that. But to formally put it in policy, we would have to bring it back for another meeting. What I would suggest is let's give consensus on that. Let our office bring back some tweaking to the language at a later workshop. And then we could, or later work session, and then we could work that through and get that provision passed as well.
Yes, in the meantime, pass what we have.
Yes.
Right, yes. And operate under what we've discussed. And then a glitch amendment, if you will, that comes back through the normal process with another batch. Does that work? Okay, awesome.
So Madam Chair, can I, just to Member Gallo's point, you know, I'm trying, I deal with the legal end of it. You all deal with the political realities of it. But I can help give you some legal language that may be helpful, that you can point to, to your constituents to say, hey, this is the legal process set up under Florida law. So when the superintendent nominates an employee, you all are responsible to appoint and to contract with that nominee unless there is good cause to reject them. Good cause is they don't meet the minimum qualifications of the job. They've done something that would constitute just cause for dismissal under Florida statutes. Or they've done, they've committed a violation of the principles of professional conduct. That's it. Absent those three bases under Florida law, when the superintendent nominates an employee, you all have to appoint them. That's just what the law is. So you can tell them that. And then that green case that I always cite from, they said, the case says, "We perceive the allocation of responsibilities with respect to school district personnel matters outlined above, i.e. selection by the superintendent and appointment by the board, was intended not only to remove political considerations from the education of children, but also to ensure that the superintendent will have sufficient control and authority over employees of the school district to make, it says him, but her, to carry out the responsibilities of managing the system. An executive or administrator who cannot control his employees, her employees cannot function." That's what the case law says. I know that doesn't affect the political realities of you all receiving the emails. But at least you can point back and say, the law says X, and that we have very limited ability, once an employee is nominated, to affect that. I think by talking with the superintendent prior to, that is where you all will have the greatest effect on meeting the needs of your community.
Member Gallo.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Palmerini. And I, and I appreciate that, I really do. What I have found is if I were to take that and send it to some of my constituents, as the Chair, as the Chair mentioned, they would say, well, then fire the superintendent. You know, if you're not, if you're not in a collaborative relationship with your superintendent in the district, then why aren't you doing something about it? So usually when I, when I come back with the legal ease, it's not perceived very well. So I, but I, and I understand that there's a very clear delineation. I think all that I'm asking for is is more collaboration with the board. There are other districts that it's, it's, it looks far different than it does here in Orange County. So I'm just wanting to, for us to be used kind of as a resource. That's what we were elected to do. That's what we want to do. I don't want to make hiring and firing decisions. And I love that it says that that politics has no place in education in that case law. But I think we're living and breathing in a time that that's just not the case. So I, but I do appreciate that, thank you.
That was kind of funny, funny line. I would love that it were so, if only it were true.
I read, you all can do with that information what you will, but.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it. It was very valuable for you to put that back into the record and remind all of us that we do have that explanation that we can provide. Member Gallo is right, that doesn't always resonate with the public, but it is, it is factually correct and helpful. I have a question, and it has to do with subparagraph two. And you pointed out that this deals with, the part that I have concern about is the language that says, "The superintendent may refuse such requests that in the superintendent's opinion require a material amount of staff time or resources or that are disruptor disruptive or unreasonable." Some subjective terminology in there. I recognize that you pointed out it was only for the, we put the word individual to be clear that that's an individual asking, not the board asking. And perhaps that clarifies it enough. It does also apply to committees. So I could imagine the board appointing a committee and the committee wanting information. I do have a hard time with the superintendent that we have or with the superintendent we're going to have. I have a hard time imagining the scenario where they say no. So I don't think that this is a a problem that's likely to arise anytime soon. But I guess the override here is since we have defined it as individual board member, if a committee were to ask for information and not be given that information, the board itself could come back and then direct the superintendent to provide the information to the committee.
They most certainly could, yes.
Yeah, okay, now that we've revised it this way. Okay, because that was the one, the one concern. And of course, anything they're asking for this public record, they're going to get. But I think this has to do with maybe tabulating data and creating reports that aren't already public record. So let me go to Member Castredal.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I pushed my button to speak when Member Gallo was speaking about the issue. Because I, on my notepad here, was the first thing I wrote down was the board members being more informed of the principal changes. So I just wanted to back up Member Gallo and Member Jacobs about the need to do that. And I see in language, it says that the selection will be, that the board members will be notified in advance. And sometimes that is, I'm the first call, and then the second call is to the principal. So if there's a way to involve the board members before that decision has been finalized. I don't know if that's in procedure or if that's a policy issue, but.
I think, first of all, if you were to put it, could you put it in policy? Yes, would it be a substantive change? Yes, so we would have to reworkshop it.
Right.
I think it could be a procedural item that the superintendent is well aware of and can, you know, keep you informed based upon what you've just laid out. Ie, I was thinking, you know, they can consult about the needs of the community prior to the selection going out. And then, once the selection is made, a call going to you all saying, here's who it's going to be as the principal.
Okay, I just, I'm all in favor of bringing it back in the future. Thank you.
And I'm putting notes now to, for future revisions to encompass those.
All right, thank you. Before I go to Member Gallo, let me just double check and see if either of our board members that are on the call want to add anything, and then I'll go back to Member Gallo.
I concur with the remarks, this is fine.
All right, thank you.
I concur as well, this is Member Bird.
Thank you. All right, Member Gallo, back to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I usually get the phone call after the principal, so I'm impressed that Karen's getting the phone call prior to the principal being notified. Because I usually get it like days after the conversation has happened and the principal, they've already made the decision. Like, I don't, I don't even get the call before the principal. So we'll leave that one alone. So the individual, so first off, I just want to be, I want to be clear. Like, I've gone to our superintendent several times with individual request, individual needs. I go to bridge it a lot with individual requests and needs. When I hear something on the TV, I'm like, you know, what's going on? Is this true? And they provide information. So I've never had an instance where I've asked for information. And usually when I do, the district is extremely good about making sure that all board members then know. Like, if one board member asks for information, they give it to all, which is wonderful, then we all have the same information. So like, in the, like, I've gone to the superintendent on individual school needs, and some of it was quite comprehensive. Like, some of it required people to come out facility related, to kind of look, is this doable? Winter Park High comes to mind. And, but she's always graciously, like, looked into it and hasn't come before the board. Are you talking about like those type of items? Like, I'm just trying to understand. Because I don't think that every single thing needs to be like a board discussion when we're talking about facilities or individual schools or the needs of our schools.
No, that's exactly what this policy is designed to encompass. So if you have an issue, and you said Winter Park and the facility. So if you have an issue with Winter Park and the facility, you go to the superintendent. You have those discussions operationally. She comes back to you and says, yes, we can do X, or no, we can't do X, and here's why. That's, that's something that we are, that this policy would expressly allow and continue to encourage. What this is designed to do is, not that I've ever seen a board member in my time here do this, but what it's designed to prevent is you all going to the principal of X school and saying, you need to do A, B, C, and D with your facility. You need to get rid of A, B, C, and D person.
Yeah, we wouldn't do that.
No, I know you wouldn't, and I have never experienced that, but I think that's what the intent of the provision was.
Okay, awesome, thank you for the clarification.
But I will say in Orange County, that similar situation did sometimes play out when there were, and not having clear, and we did have a charter amendment that says you're not allowed to do it. But if you haven't been reading the charter amendment. So we would occasionally have new board members that assumed that they could redesign a park or, you know, put new equipment in and switch out employees they didn't like. And so it's very good to have it documented. Member Lopez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to show my support. I have the same concerns. And also the why. I think that we should know which principal will be assigned before they talk to the principal, that it will be assigned to that position. Because we can have the conversation as Ms. Gallo, Board Member Gallo was saying, we know our constituents more than than other people in the district. So I think that that conversation can lead sometimes to decisions that we think might will be more more assertive to the school, based in the demographics and the challenges that, that a specific school will be facing. I also have a concern when we have concerns, and I don't want to sound redundant, but sometimes we receive a lot of complaints from staff members, from constituents, from the community in general, from parents, from students. And I don't see, based in the recommendation, the change of that principal. I do not know what is the protocol, maybe to be followed, to see a change. You know, how long do we have to wait when we see things happening after another? With staff members, with teachers, with students, with the community? How long do we have to wait in order to recommend, to provide a recommendation to the superintendent and see the change? Because our students are suffering the consequences or not having a person that can be effective.
So I would say a couple of things. One, you all receive these complaints. I would think it'd be, you know, the superintendent and her staff would appreciate hearing about them sooner rather than later because you don't want it bubbling to a critical mass, maybe, mass. Maybe you can solve an issue if it's one or two parents or one or two community members early by addressing it early, by getting it to the superintendent. But if you start to receive a whole critical mass of emails and communications saying, hey, this principal is problematic, then you have that conversation with the superintendent. And then our principals are on annual contracts. So every year, the superintendent has to bring back, and we did it at the last meeting in May, all of the administrators for reappointment. And so then that's the superintendent's time to either make a decision. I understand that there's issues, but I still think this principal needs to be at this school. So I'm going to renominate them to be at this school. Or the superintendent can say, I hear the concerns, maybe this principal needs to go elsewhere, and I can put somebody else in. I think the earlier you get that to the superintendent, the better. So that can play part of her decision making as she goes forward every year as far as when she makes the decision on who to appoint to a particular school, when they, when she presents it to you all in a board agenda.
And how long the conversations can last?
That is between you and the superintendent. I mean, you guys, you all, I'm sure, will have relationships with the superintendent where you say, maybe you have a standing meeting with the superintendent once every couple of weeks as a suggestion. Or maybe, I'm sure you all call the superintendent whenever you have an issue arise that you think needs immediate attention. That's a, that's a, not a, you know, legal question. That is a board superintendent, board member superintendent, you know, talk, conversation to work out that relationship.
Even when we have support from data in so many ways?
You can support, you can have support with data, right? And you can give the superintendent that data that says, whatever the data would be. The test scores have gone down this year. We've had an increase in the number of suspensions that are exponential. I'm sure the superintendent and her staff would.
Staff members leaving the.
Staff members, yes. I'm sure the superintendent and her staff would be well aware of that. But I think you give that to them. But the superintendent, you give that data to the superintendent, and then the superintendent has a decision to make to say, all right, I've looked at that data, maybe this principal doesn't need to be at this particular location anymore, and we get somebody new in. Or the superintendent could say, I see the data, but I still think the principal can do good things, and I'm going to renominate that principal for this school. So that's the, that's the difficult issue that you have to deal with with the superintendent. It's, you give the superintendent the information. You say, my community may want somebody different in here. And the superintendent will take that information in and say, either I agree with the community that it's time for a change, or I don't necessarily agree because I think this principal is doing X, Y, and Z correctly to move student achievement at this school, and here's why. But that's a conversation you have with the superintendent. And you all sit down with her or have that phone conversation and say, this is what my community is telling me, the superintendent is saying, well, this is why I'm making the decision. I'm making one way or the other. That's not necessarily a policy thing. That is a superintendent board relations thing.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Member Bird, I'm sorry. Can I go to Member Bird first because we haven't had a chance to hear from her? Member Bird and then Member Gallo.
Thank you, Chair. I was just going to piggyback on that last comment from Member Lopez and the response from Mr. Palmerini. I think that he's, he's right. I think that that is, if a board member feels that the superintendent is not being responsive to their issues or their requests or their concerns over a period of time, then I would think that that is where you, a board member could could indicate that on the annual evaluation of the superintendent. So I think that that's a different situation than than what we, what we were talking about before. If, you know, bringing it to the superintendent, that's one thing. But then if, if a board member feels that the superintendent is not being responsive to concerns of, of the board, then, then that is an evaluation issue, I would think. So that was just my two cents on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Bird. Let me recognize Member Felder, who just joined us, and then I'll go to Member Gallo. Member Felder.
Okay, good morning, guys. How's everybody doing? I'm cruise ready, okay. So now, I'm so grateful that we're having this conversation about relationships. And I just wanted to say or reiterate, there's a very thin line I'm learning between operational and what's governance. But the thing that keeps me afloat is that governance governs the operation. So it's important that as board members, we are the only communication, so to speak, that the community, teachers, principals, administrators have in terms of their input or their concerns. or their concerns, and sometimes our superintendent. I mean, this is a huge district and there are a lot of pieces in the puzzle, and sometimes you can't entertain all the idiosyncrasies that arise as we try to navigate this thing called public education. However, I just wanted to say I am grateful that we are revisiting board members' input and having knowledge of things that happen in the school, not just for District 5, that's the one that I have the jurisdiction over, but I'm a board member on the school board for all of the districts. So I think it's important that we recognize other board members' input, because there was a situation that was going on in December at Carver, and Board Member Melissa Byrd was extremely helpful to me in terms of how I could work some things out. She had been on the board longer than I had, and she suggested through, I think it was through Mrs. McGill, I was able to get the email or whatever, but she also spoke at the board member, at the board meeting. So I think with what we're going to be facing, the mental health challenges that we're going to be having, some of our schools, the grades went down, not all of them, and the teacher retention in Orange County is more than a notion. The teacher retention probably across the nation is probably more than a notion. However, I think that if we work, as you have said, much harder with communications with the district in terms of the decisions that they make, not only that, but that we need to be abreast. It would just help us to hear what's going on before a member of our constituency calls us up and say, why so-and-so leaving? We're like, they're not leaving. Yes, they are. And then we maybe get a memo. That's not fair. That should not happen. So I thank you for having this conversation. I think it's very important, and thank you for recognizing me. Thank you.
Absolutely. Member Gallow?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So in listening to Member Felder talk, this is just a suggestion, it's nothing that I don't think that needs to be in policy, but this time of year, well typically right after school ends, there's a shift of teachers from one school to the next. We have a lot of teachers that move around for different reasons. I was talking to some teachers and asking, you know, why they left and where they're going and all that. It occurred to me that we don't do exit interviews for teachers who leave one school to go to another school. So I'm wondering, especially if we have a large amount of teachers leaving one school, there's usually a reason why teachers are exiting and going to another one, especially when they're staying in Orange County public schools. So I don't know if we could like do an exit interview when we see large numbers, or really of any teacher that moves from one school to the other school, why did they leave? Was it just you need to be closer to home, personal reasons? Was it the culture at that school? But especially when we see multiple teachers leaving, there's usually an indication of an issue at that school that we may need to address, and it would be great to get the viewpoints of the teachers that are actually leaving as they kind of, they work there and they understand the culture of that school. That's not anything that needs to be in policy. I just want to, I know we're going to be doing a retreat and I just kind of want to throw it out there into the universe.
Okay. Dr. Vasquez, do you want to comment? You don't have to, but.
I've been making lists of things that I think we'll be able to address at the retreat, and I would ask that we wait till we're able to hold a retreat and then see if we need to bring back any of the, especially this policy, but I am feverishly taking notes.
Thank you. Member Byrd?
Oh, I'm good now. I already commented. I'm good. Thank you.
All right. So where we are, where I understand us to be, and if board members, if you disagree, this would be the time to speak, is that we're going to move forward with this policy the way it is, that we may, after we have our retreat, we may decide to bring it back for some changes, but at this time, we're going to move this forward. All right, without objection, we have consensus. Mr. Palmieri, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next policy is BDF, the Unitary Status Advisory and Oversight Committee. As you all will remember, in 2010, we declared, or we achieved unitary status from the United States District Court here in Orlando, and as part of achieving that unitary status, we entered into an agreement that created the Unitary Status Advisory and Oversight Committee. Now, that committee was, that settlement agreement had various components about staff recruitment, participation in athletic activities and facilities. And under the terms of that settlement agreement, it was supposed to expire, and the Unitary Status Advisory and Oversight Committee was supposed to go away once the settlement agreement expired. But this board said that it was important to continue to keep that committee in place. So what we have done, other than minor, you know, technical, small changes and, you know, terminology changes, is, in the last paragraph, it says, the Unitary Status Advisory Oversight Committee may only be terminated upon a vote of the board. And then we added language, it is imperative that the district have the oversight of the USAOC to ensure the terms of the settlement agreement continue to be met. This board has made a commitment to ensure that we continue to have opportunities for athletics and to continue our hiring practices that, you know, ensure that we have diversity here within Orange County, and that we want that committee to continue in order to help us achieve those goals. So that is the substantive change in this policy. Are there any questions?
I have one question, and that is, it came to my attention in looking at Number 7, Annual Reporting, that we are supposed to be presented with a report by August 1st of each year, and I cannot recall if we've had a report yet this year. Okay.
Yeah, I know we schedule them in components. I know we do, you know, one meeting it'll be sports, one meeting it'll be hiring in that matter, but I can't remember having, and Dr. Williams is shaking her head, no.
And I know we have had a report, at least some time since I've been here, from the Unitary Status Committee. I don't know that I'm sure that it's been an annual report. So it might be, the only meeting that we have would be next Tuesday, it's not on the agenda. We could put, we could add it to the agenda. I'm concerned that we are putting our Unitary Status Committee in quite a bind to ask them to produce a report and be ready to present it. So I think we're going to miss this deadline this year, and then we just need to work to make sure this is always calendared in advance. And Kelly, you can help me make sure on my end that I'm trying to, between the superintendent and I, that we have a calendar that includes this and that the committee knows. Other than that, I had no comments. Any other board members that doesn't appear have comments, so we can move on. Nope. Member Kastner-Denial?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Is it possible to, or necessary to put into the policy that we get an updated member list of who's on the committee?
So what I can tell you is, we have, through our office, reached out to the folks who used to serve on the committee to see if they're continued to be interested in continuing to serve. Once that goes through and once we get an update on that, we can reach back out to you if we need additional members of the committee. We'll obviously ask for you all to suggest folks from your district, and once we get that finalized, I'm sure we will send out a list that says, here are the members of the committee.
So we're good, then?
Yeah.
Yes. Thank you.
All right. To summarize, they're working on reaching out to each member to make sure that they're still willing to serve, and once they have that information, they'll confirm back to us who is still on the committee and any vacancies that might need to be filled by any district members.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. And Member Kastner-Denial?
Oh, no.
Okay, thank you. All right, back to you, Mr. Palmieri.
Thank you, and we do have consensus to move that one forward.
We do have consensus to move that forward, yes.
The next policy is BDG Attorney, School Attorney Legal Services. We just made some minor changes in this. Motions for attorney's fees and costs on behalf of the board, if we file it, can be made by the General Counsel or designee. Quite frankly, in many cases, that's going to be a me question, so that's why designee was put in there. We just added some terminology, litigation, the General Counsel or designee, because again, I make assignments of legal work. And then litigation settlement authority, there's not much in the way of changes. We only change is the senior director of risk management or designee can settle up personal injury, property damage, labor and employment, and workers' compensation claims and lawsuits below $20,000. Those are the changes to this policy.
All right, any comments? Nope.
Below means that you can get up to that or nothing? That's a limit?
No. So there are various categories of settlement authority. So below 20,000, risk management can do under the policy. Between 20,000 and 50,000, the General Counsel can do under this policy, and above 50,000, it has to come to this board for approval.
Oh.
Yeah. So what this just says is, if it's below that number, risk management can take care of it. If it's between this number-
Oh, I see. We can get care of it.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Do we have any concerns, or can we move this forward? Well, if we don't have any concerns, we'll move this forward. No concerns, we have consensus.
The next policy, Ms. Enval was very sad not to be here to present this one in particular. It's the school board policy process. And so what we did in this policy is made some terminology changes. We put the definition of a rule under Florida law, which is an agency statement of general applicab- let me try that again in English. An agency statement of general applicability that implements, interprets, or prescribes law or policy, or describes the procedure or practice requirements of an agency and include any forms which impose any requirement or solicits any information not specifically required by statute or by an existing rule. That's the statutory definition of a rule. The term "rule" doesn't include curricula by educational units, that's a specific statutory exception to that. The board's rules are termed policies, and the terms can be used interchangeably. As we've had that discussion before, various statutes will say, boards can pass policies and boards can pass rules, so we use those terms interchangeably. The traditional policy adoption process, basically it's just terminology changes from rule to policy, but you see here in A, the superintendent or designee, we've added designee that allows to get the written notice published. The superintendent's not the one actually calling the newspaper, so we put designee in there. We put in there that what we already do in practice, we put the full text of the proposed rule or amendment and a summary thereof in the advertisement. And we have specific legal authority where folks can write in for the prescribed policy and location of the text or the proposed change may be obtained without cost. Again, that's a statutory requirement, that without cost portion. So again, you see here just various formatting changes from policy to rule. Indeed, the superintendent or designee, we shall immediately file a copy of any new policy, and then policy handbook shall be amended accordingly and posted on the district website. We used to have big, huge, orange notebooks of all the school board policies that basically has gone away in favor of publication on the website. We have an emergency policy section, we've just made formatting changes there, and then it says, in B, the superintendent or designee shall properly record the effective date of emergency policies. And then in three, this is technical changes to the policy. And periodically, it may be deemed necessary to make technical corrections to policies that have already been adopted through the normal statutory procedures. Technical corrections may include the consolidation of sections, transfer of sections, combining and dividing sections, renumbering sections, sections, chapters, and titles, corrections or additions for grammatical or typographical errors, and/or alterations or omissions not affecting the construction or meaning of those sections, subsections, chapters, titles, or policies as a whole. Basically, if we see a typo in a policy, we get to change it. If we think it would read better by combining sections or separating them out without changing the substance, we get to change it. So should it be determined by the board, the superintendent, or designee to make such technical corrections? It may be accomplished by resolution as part of the consent agenda without going through the normal policy adoption procedure. This would not in any way endanger any of our policies for technical corrections, we can make those anyways. Policy proposals. Any school board employee, we changed the word citizen to individual, or agency may obtain information relating to the method of proposing a policy and may submit a policy proposal to the superintendent's office. I think I've seen one of those in my 13, or close to 13 years, so, but folks can suggest policy changes if they would like to. Copies of policies, a copy of the compiled policies as updates shall be available for inspection in the office of the superintendent or designee and also maintained on the district's website. Now, of course, we will refer folks to the website for the most part, but if they ask for a physical hard copy of that, we would have to produce that under state law, of course, there would be a cost of that, but we have to ensure that a physical copy is available if they want it. And then the rest of that is a deletion. Schedule for legal advertisements. Basically, in Number 2, notification to all appropriate agencies and individuals to amend, adopt, or repeal school board policy shall be given at least 21 days prior to the intended date of school board action in accordance with Florida statutes. As you know, Chapter 120 lays out a specific timeframe by which we have to do notice of policy, have a rule development workshop, and then pass it. So that just codifies what we've already been doing. And then this is the part that Amy is really excited about. The superintendent or designee shall establish procedures for maintenance of policies adopted by the board. These procedures shall address the manner in which new policies will be developed, classified, adopted, and disseminated. The policies shall be organized and grouped together in related categories entitled so that the overall content of each policy is transparent or clear. You see in there a deletion of the National Education Policy Network, National School Boards Association Policy Classification System. That's the reason why our policies are named BG, BDG, and all of the other designations we have. So this will give us the option to have a more clear, more concise organization system in order to make sure that it's easier to find for folks when they're looking for policies. That is the purpose of that change. Policy exemption for changes in law. Basically, these are just changing the words rules to policies, but that, this provision basically says if a policy conflicts with the law, the law controls. That's just a general statement of what the law actually is. Staff review of policy. So this has been, this provision right here actually comes from policy BG, G as in go, C as in cat, which we are proposing to repeal in the next action, but this is just a insertion into the policy, this policy BG, that says, the superintendent shall establish and maintain an orderly plan for preserving and making accessible the policies adopted by the board and the administrative rules and regulations needed to put them in effect. And all of this will, is just a regurgitation of what is in policy BG, which we will propose to repeal next. Are there any questions?
Yes, there are. Member Kastner-Denial?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't have a question, I just appreciate the clarification of the policy language and the use of the new system. I've already found it helpful, and I'm supposed to be very familiar with the policies, and I hope that this new system helps, you know, our teachers and parents also be able to navigate the policies that govern us. So thank you for all the effort you all have put into reorganizing it, helps. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Kastner-Denial. I have one question for you, Mr. Palmieri. It's under one, under Section 1, Paragraph B, and it refers to a person who is substantially affected by a proposal, and that they have the ability to repeal. They have 21 days following the notice of intent to adopt, amend, or repeal the policy to file a written request with the school board seeking an administrative determination as to validity of the proposed policy. So who actually does that administrative determination?
This is a very odd provision, because there is a repeal, there is a challenge process in Chapter 120, which says, if you're substantially affected by a rule or repeal, you can file, and we've engaged in some sort of invalid exercise of delegated legislative authority or one of those bases to invalidate a rule, you can file a proceeding with DOA. And that's where you would normally handle it. There was actually, and forgive me for not remembering the exact subject of it, it may have been overmasked, but somebody moved, filed for an administrative appeal of it to say, we were engaged in an invalid exercise of legislative authority, but they did it through the district by not filing it with DOA. So who would decide that? Our General Counsel would be the general- Our general counsel would be generally the person who would decide that kind of appeal that's submitted under this provision. Like I said, there's been one in my 13 years here, and it's a very unusual process. Obviously, we wouldn't have brought you a policy that we thought was an invalid exercise of delegated legislative authority, so that was disposed with. And if I remember on that one, it was also not timely filed as well. I think it was filed two or three months out, so I think we said, this is untimely, and as such, your appeal is denied.
Yeah, I'm remembering one that I think may have had to do with an employee who was, or someone who was turned down for employment in the timeframe, and anyway, that went through some administrative appeal process, I don't know, that had to do with this.
No, it wouldn't have had to do with this.
And I was, when I see that language, I think of, you know, an independent administrative judge, but that's not what this means.
That's not what this is, because they have the avenue, if they wanted, under Chapter 120, to get an administrative judge.
Okay. Okay. Member Gallo?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to concur with Member Castor-Denial. I do think that this is, will be a lot easier to read and understand, and more transparent, not only for our staff, but for our, for the public. The old system was very confusing. You go looking for a policy, you'd have to search, because there was no, nobody understood how it was categorized. So this is good, so I appreciate us doing this. I did want to point out, because it mentioned the National School Boards Association, Orange County School Board is no longer a part of the National School Boards Association, because the Florida School Boards Association pulled out of that membership, and the Florida School Boards Association is a founding member of a new association. I think there's like 15 different states that are a part of it, and I think on the website, this does not pertain to this policy, it still recognizes us as part of the National School Boards Association, which we're not. So I just wanted to point that out. It occurred to me when I was reading that policy, so thank you.
All right, thank you. But we are a part of the Council of Great City Schools.
Yes.
Thought I'd throw that in there while we're-
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah. Okay. Mr. Palmieri, there are no objections, I don't believe, to the changes that you've recommended here, and so we'll move that forward, and now we have two, I believe, to repeal.
Yes. The first is Policy BG, as in go, C as in cat. Staff review of rules, as I said, this is being deleted because we incorporated into the previous policy BG. So we still have the language, we just got rid of one policy and incorporated it into another associated policy.
Okay. And no objection there? No comments?
Okay.
Go ahead.
And finally, Policy EBBA, dealing with face coverings. This might be the least controversial time I talk about this policy. So having said that, this policy is being brought to you all for repeal. As you know, the legislature last year, in its special session in November, passed a law that says we cannot require students to wear face coverings. So part of this policy was to require students to wear face coverings, and this policy just recognizes the practice we have now of allowing folks who want to wear masks to wear masks, and folks who do not want to wear masks to wear masks. And this was always meant to be a policy dealing with the effects of the pandemic, and that's why we are now here bringing a repeal to you all.
All right. And no comments or objections there either? Anything else to come before the board? Anything from board members? All right, seeing none, then we will now adjourn.